I forgot all about it.
So you know, you can use, we can use the simulator for twenty bucks an hour.
Yeah, they were on the.
I went over Allen once, but I don't know.
Yeah, just down and play.
Oh, yeah. So I don't know whether it was.
It seemed to be happening.
But I just read it's not moving.
No. I play occasionally. I play more when other people are paying.
Yeah, yeah. You need an entertaining activity for an hour. They have a simulator over there. Yeah, yeah, it's old like. I'm dining room.
And they can guide.
Very late. Raid the town council. Yeah, I know.
We should just have our.
I'm thinking it would complain if you raided the Fred Stevens yard uses.
Their heads prevail.
Have these in there?
Well, it's the times we live in, right?
You want me to blow it up more?
Sure. I can email it to you if you want. Unless it's a connectivity issue.
It, yeah, just want to download. Really?
There's still like. Just like all the entertainment stuff. All on like.
Oh, really? Recently pressed. Oh, they have to like help gather all the things that go on. They have a council liaison or.
Okay, everybody here?
Good, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. A call called order the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, April first, twenty twenty five. Can I get a roll, a roll call, please, Chris?
Absolutely.
Uh, Miss Proper. Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Gore.
Here.
Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Chris. Uh, planning commissioners, any changes to the minutes today?
Chair, I do, and I'm not quite sure how to articulate it, but part of the discussion on the screening from Route nine of the new neighborhood. The landscape architect showed only one plan that showed a tree plan, and it was a wedged shaped piece of lot towards the center. And somehow that's not captured, but they do have a concept for a design for tree screening. And I'd like to make note of that, and I'd like the town not to lose that track of that. Nancy showed one plan with a pie shaped sliver of tree screening. It was about the fourth slide she showed, and it doesn't really speak to that. You know, it talks about the slope and how difficult it is to screen, but she actually had a design that did so.
Okay.
I do want to point out the landscape plan won't be approved with the master plan. It'll be a separate permit later, but we will take note that we, those screening areas need to remain.
Yeah, just capture it. Thank you.
And, and I guess all this further not. That, that is like just the topic of discussion that will come back. Screening and landscaping at the town project hearing, it's kind of noted as something as a follow up item.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other changes to the minutes? Okay, the minutes will stand approved as is, or with my exchanges. Uh, any changes to the agenda, Chris?
Uh, there's no changes.
Okay. All right, with that, I'm going to open the meeting up to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are, we are asked to take comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself.
You people online, but no hands raised? Thanks.
Audience. Public comment on historic preservation. And move to the final hearing on BGV parcel two workforce housing and parking lot improvements at four one five North Park Avenue, PL twenty twenty four zero four two two. And Sarah, we would love to hear from you.
All right, let's get the stands pulled up here so everybody online can see also. It is working. In the interim, I'm Sarah Crump, planner for the town. Um, this evening, we're looking at parcel two for the BGV employee housing apartments. Again, this is the third and final hearing for this project. Um, it's proposing forty eight bedroom suites. That's the equivalent of eight six bedroom apartment units on this North Gold Rush tract, which is four fifteen North Park Avenue. And um, the applicant made some substantial changes regarding quality of living and site plan changes between the first and second hearing um, that addressed most of the commissioner comments that were preceding. Um, they made some minor adjustments between the second and this hearing, and I'll go over those shortly. Um, I do want to try to be succinct tonight because most of the changes are very minor. Um, I will pass out some some alterations to the findings and conditions, and we will discuss those at the end. And I also have the material board samples for you here, so I'll just pass those around um, while I'm speaking, and I'll discuss them specifically at the end. Take a look at the site plan for the minor changes that have occurred since the second hearing. I apologize that I don't have a way to open this in Adobe tonight because it's coming from our new file sharing system. So we will um, look at it on here and do my best to zoom in when necessary. Okay.
But is it possible to pull that from the packet from the web?
I couldn't get the web download to work in Adobe. Open it, but it wouldn't work.
I was unable to log into my SharePoint on this because it's not my, I, I am not the one who started the computer.
So I was wondering if we could go to like the, the planning commission website and.
That's what this is from. Where.
SharePoint.
No, hold on. I see what you're saying. We can try to get it a, a third way.
I said, I think we might get a little bit, the frame a little larger.
Well, this was, is loading, um, the first substantial change uh, or minor change that was made since the second preliminary hearing. Um, they did shift the building two feet to the north, um, very minor. A curb was added around the building's exterior to protect the building foundation from parking around the perimeter. And this is something that staff had asked for originally, um, so we're thankful that the applicant added that. They've redesigned some of the drive aisles to make it more conducive to backing out of a particular parking spot. And um, the building square footage did adjust through um, changes to the mechanical spaces. Uh, it's an increase of only one hundred and forty five square feet. For those changes, it's, the project is still within the required and allowed density and mass. The height increased approximately three inches as a result of the move to the north. Um, and then, uh, as suggested by commissioners at the second hearing, they did change the doors in the common areas to be full light glass doors um, to promote some social interaction in those spaces. And then the final change was um, related to the interior walls um, on the corridors where the bedroom suites are accessed. Um, those are now recessed, and so the walls undulate more um, in the interior. Um, I'm, this seems to have something to do with the structural um, positioning of the boxes, so. Those are the significant changes since the last hearing. And I do um, want to notice uh, the materials that are being passed around that were provided by the applicant. It's the same um, fiber cement product that was proposed since the beginning. They just have the samples for us here now. Um, some of the panels will be vertical board and batten, and then there will also be a horizontal lap cementitious siding as well. And then I think they have samples of the windows and um, the dark metal accents that'll be on the building as well. I apologize, the computers just doesn't want to cooperate tonight. As a quick summary of the points analysis, because nothing changed regarding the points or analysis against the development code, development agreement or master plan since the last hearing. We continue to have negative one point under policy six R, which regards um, broken, unbroken ridge lines greater than fifty feet in length. And then we have positive points under the following policy fifteen R refuse, which uh, is regarding the inclusion of an interior trash and recycling location that'll be accessed on this northeast end of the building. On a positive point under eighteen R for parking. Um, this is because of the provision of the shared driveway for the two uses, parking and uh, the apartment complex, skier parking in the apartment complex. And then another positive point under policy seven or twenty seven R, which is for the attractive drainage area to the north. Um, this results in a total point analysis of positive two. The applicant made some suggested changes to the findings and conditions. Um, those are included in the draft that was sent around there regarding policy fifteen or condition fifteen and condition twenty four. So under condition fifteen, uh, it's just clarifying that the applicants um, have already provided the density on the site through the master plan changes. It's actually the town's responsibility to transfer the additional density through a covenant. So the change is just clarifying that they've actually already done their part. And then on number twenty four, uh, this is just uh, basically taking verbatim what is said in the development agreement and bringing it into the conditions regarding the roundabout. And so instead of leaving out that section that talks about um, the about ability to bond for the roundabout and extenuating circumstances. Uh, we didn't want to leave that out. The applicant didn't want to leave that out. That is exactly what it says in the development agreement, so making sure that's clear under policy, under condition twenty four. So those are the only two changes. I'm happy to take questions about that. Yes.
Is it not a policy of CDOT to require bonding for any improvement like that?
Well, this is separate from not a construction. No, let me finish. It's not a construction bond. It's a, we didn't finish the work bond as in a kind of in reference to number thirty one, I think, on your uh, page where it talks about if you don't complete a project, we allow bonding in that case. It is a performance bond, but it's, it's not quite the same as a construction bond that you would put up before the project is completed. Yeah, like a landscape. Yeah, um, but yes, CDOT, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent clear on exactly what bonding they require for the project, and it is a totally separate permit for the roundabout.
So if they were to get partially through the construction of that, finding that A, they couldn't finish, B, they couldn't perform, or C, that they were going to be too late. They could post this bond and then get the occupancy permit so that they could move forward. Is that how this works?
That's my understanding of the obligations of the development agreement, and that's just being reflected here. Any other questions about those minor changes? Okay. So with that, staff does recommend that you approve this project this evening at final hearing with the positive two points proposed. Um, we find that it does meet all the conditions of the development agreement, uh, applicable code of the development code and the master plan as it was um, analyzed against. I'm happy to take additional questions about the application at this time, and I think the applicant does want to speak, or maybe not.
Question.
Yes.
Under adjacent uses, it has west is private open space. Is that referring to the, the hill that's part of the shock? Is that part of Shock Hills HOA?
Yes, it's a Shock Hill open space to the west, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff, Mike? Susan, any questions for Sarah?
No.
Questions? I have no further questions, so. Love to hear from you.
I think, uh, Graham Frank, BGV, I think, uh, are what I would say is short and simple tonight. Uh, I think you guys know the Herculean effort that Sarah's been under. With not this project, but five projects that we have in the hopper. Chris and Sarah have been amazing and continue to be, and we appreciate that. I think this project ended at a much better spot with you guys' feedback than we came in and started. And I think that feedback was meaningful, and I think that the people that live here will appreciate it. Um, as I look at the project now, it has definitely gotten better, and so I think this process works and we appreciate the process, so. Um, unless there's questions from you guys from tonight, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Graham. Any questions for Graham? Mike? Mark, any questions for Graham?
No.
Susan.
No questions.
We don't make this easy. No questions.
I have a really nitpicky livability question. There's one refrigerator shown in the kitchens for six units and.
There will be multiple. That was just a, for the renderings. There will be multiple.
My only concern.
And those doors you guys noticed or no? The, I think that that was one of the best additions. The whole thing was the full light glass. Um, making that space more usable for everybody. So I think that was a great one in the process too, but yes, there will be copious storage because with one refrigerator, we're just signing up for battles otherwise.
All right, thank you very much. Nice.
Alan, any questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Graham. So we'll, as this is a public hearing, we will open if we're public comment. If you have comments, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine. If you're attending the meeting by phone, then press star six to unmute yourself. Sarah, do we have any?
There's, there's a few people online. I just want to give one second if, if anybody would like to raise their hand and comment. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wish to comment? Not seeing any, we will close the public hearing. And go to planning commissioner comments, and then we'll take a final motion. Any comments, Alan?
Yeah, I just say, um, I just want to say, uh, BGV, the applicant and staff, you guys have done a great job. Given very um, almost impossible uh, Venn diagram of requirements. Um, and I just want to note, I, I believe that, uh, I think Town Council and Vale Resorts uh, missed a great opportunity to provide more housing and housing for more workers at this location. It's a perfect spot to have more density than they have here, and um, I don't think seasonal twenty something workers um, um, have to have their own bathroom and, and bedroom for a six month job. I think there could have been higher density in the space that you have, because if they return for another season, they're going to have to at least share a bathroom and probably a bedroom for whatever they can afford for their second year working for Vale Resorts. But otherwise, you guys did a great job.
Thank you, Alan. Elaine.
Um, I appreciate you adding the outdoor space, so the tables and the trees. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Elaine, any comments?
Uh, just appreciate all the hard work. You've done, and that's it.
Thanks. Susan.
Same thing, you know, just appreciate uh, responsiveness to our comments and concerns, and I I think you've done what you can with a difficult situation here.
Thank you, Elaine. Mark, any comments?
Um, yes. No surprise, I really don't like this project. I still feel strongly that it is a substandard housing and very unattractive building to be built on a prominent and very visible site across from city market. Aside from those observations, I have a problem with Vale Summit Resorts being the beneficiary of this project. They retain ownership of the real estate. The site is expanded to allow them to continue to fulfill their obligation to provide parking spaces for their own customers per the parking agreement. Furthermore, they will be the owners of the improvements of the property, enable them to collect rental income during the remaining lifetime of those rental apartments while they fulfill their obligation as an employer in Breckenridge to house their employees. I'm very disappointed in our town council for enabling this project with its diminished regulations. I, for one, planning commissioner, feel completely handcuffed to do the job that I should be doing to properly review this project directly due to the limitations that were placed as a result of the town council's concessions to the developer. I see very little town benefit in this project. As a taxpaying resident, I can't understand why Breckenridge would want to expand, expand any of the town's resources to assist a New York Stock Exchange listed corporation with five point nine billion dollar market cap and quarterly revenues of over two, two hundred and sixty million dollars to accomplish their corporate responsibilities. From the business perspective, a business has several primary responsibilities. First of all, they must protect their capital. Secondly, they need to take care of their employees, because without employees, a business is nothing. This panel tried to make this point to the developer and that it was not good housing. The argument went nowhere because BGV is not the owner, and they were not in a position to spend their clients' money. My hope is that in the future, the town council will stand strong and make Vale Summit Resorts use their own resources to take care of their employees like any good corporate steward should.
Thank you, Mark. Mike, any comments?
Nope.
Thank you, Mike. I would just like to say, I, understanding the, the uh, constraints that we worked within, um, I'm, I'm quite happy with the end result. Notwithstanding my former comments, and, and I really appreciate Graham, you guys working with us. Uh, specifically myself and my comments and responding to that directly. Um, and yeah, the, 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 the half light wooden uh, doors are a great addition and that sort of thing. So I, I really appreciate and, and, and recognize too, Sarah and, you know, entire staff. There's a lot of work put into this, and there's a lot of work to come with all the rest of your project, so um, I appreciate all of them. That's all I have. Thank you. With that, can we get a motion? Mike?
Who can get there first?
Mister Chair, I recommend the planning commi, I move the planning commission approval of Breckenridge Grand Vacations North Gold Rush Lot, parcel two, employee housing development, PL twenty twenty four zero four two two, the project having met all absolute policies with a passing score of positive two points and the attached findings and conditions as modified.
As modified.
As modified.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Hey. Roll call, vote, please.
Uh, Ms. Gore.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mister Garrett.
Yes.
Mister Lees?
In spite of my disapproval with the project, I will vote yes.
Mister Fractor.
Yes.
Mister Geller.
Yes.
Great, you passed. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you, Wes.
Well. Well. Okay, great. We'll move on to the work session. For the neighborhood preservation policy work session. And we will hear from Chris.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. This is, you know, a topic that kind of, I guess, came back up. I think there's probably been a lot of discussion because of some of the higher profile redevelopment along the Wellington Road corridor. At the, you know, the council, I think, has heard, you know, from the community and kind of question like the philosophy on that. And so they asked us really to take a look at. Really that subject. And so far, we've we've. Brought the topic to the council over the course of two work sessions, one in November of twenty twenty four and another. In late January of this year. And they've provided some initial direction that I provided. In this memo is for the context. We also did work or hold a special kind of work session with. Many of the local architects and builders in the community. Mike was part of that that work session. We reached out to about forty individuals. We had. About fourteen individuals in attendance and then also had some subsequent phone conversations. And provided the written feedback we we have received thus far related to the topic. But kind of going back, you know, over a decade, you know, really fifteen years on this topic. The neighborhood preserve- preservation policy really kind of started in late two thousand seven. And then over a two year process of many stakeholder meetings. With property owners, various neighborhoods. The town adopted some home size regulation that placed above ground square footage caps. On various lots within sixteen neighborhoods. Throughout the town. Many associate with the Weishorn and Goldflake and some of those, but it's really, we've included the maps. It it does cover. A broader variety of neighborhoods than that. Some of those neighborhoods, though, since it's only the MPP policies are only subject to homes that do not have a building or disturbance envelope. There are home, there are neighborhoods that only have a couple lots that actually qualify for MPP. Such as the early filings of the Highlands. Highlands, I think, one through four has some lots that do not have envelopes. You know, we bring, we we mentioned the history of this because. The the square footage limitations were always the most contentious. You know, subject matter. And it was kind of a, you know, a hard fought negotiation between the council and, and I think the property owners. In in these neighborhoods. With that in mind, I think that's probably the starting point of the lens that the council looked at the topic. From at at these latest discussions. And after providing them some background information of like the trends of what we've seen in terms of. Development and home size in the neighborhoods. They really didn't want to pursue placing any additional. Home size restrictions on these neighborhoods, but thought that there could be other ways to influence design to make the appearance of buildings. Not as bulky, if you will. They also acknowledge, I think it's it's important to point out, and a lot of these neighborhoods, since many of these do not have. Formal HOAs, there has been, they have been developed over time and have. You know. A diverse array of architectural styles. They also found it important to not kind of set. A default style, you know, after the fact and and allow architectural freedom. That was another. Item, I think that was important for them to kind of preserve versus going to something that's a newly kind of tightly controlled style. With that, they did make a couple of suggestions. The the first one seems to, from any of the individuals we've talked to thus far, is not. Really, no one's really raised concern. It's actually the kind of tighten up the setbacks. For single family homes without a a building or disturbance envelope by eliminating. The possibility of earning negative points and then instituting the current relative policy, which requires a a greater setback. Than the absolute policy and just instituting those as an absolute absolute policy. You can see from the memo, we did compare ourselves against a a variety of pure communities. You know, throughout the Mountain West, we also did look at some other. Communities that have large, you know, kind of or pure communities outside the mountains. And it it didn't deviate substantially from what was provided in the table. And then we also looked at building heights as another potential control measure. And and even offered the that we may want to consider lowering our absolute building height from thirty five feet. Upon review of that, the council's initial reaction was they didn't want to lower. The thirty five foot maximum because they thought with the the varying topography we have here. That we may end up having. You know, less interesting, more actually a more bulky roof. Form because everyone's the build to kind of the maximum height versus having a more broken up. Roof height and asked us to consider coming back with something that maybe places. A limit on the maximum amount of ridge height that can go up to thirty five feet. And and with that, we haven't taken really a stab at that. We're still kind of throwing that out to other groups before we. Maybe make a run at that possibility. But acknowledging that, we have had comments from various people about. When you do have broken up roof lines, you do probably have to have more heat tape. You have more potential for leaks, other things. So that is something just from a a practical side and also environmental side. Side that we're aware of when we when we have really broken up roof lines. The third main suggestion the council. Wanted us to pursue, and this was unanimous, was to eliminate positive points for EV chargers. And landscaping for single family homes. Within these neighborhoods. And the reason was, they thought that the time for incentivizing both of these items. They just thought there wasn't the need to incentivize anymore. They understand that we are trying to have a more balanced code. Where you need, do need some. You know, relatively equal amount of positive and negative point opportunities, but they also countered and said that these. These points at a certain point in time were needed to incentivize either better landscaping or more EV. Facilities, but this time they feel like that's no longer needed to be incentivized and challenged us. To maybe look at some emerging topics that maybe need a little push as a replacement for positive points, which. We we haven't really had the time to kind of further dive into that, but also. In the context of discussion, if you have suggestions, we'd be happy to to look into those. We have kind of a rough timeline in terms of. This current NPP. Policy review process. As we mentioned, we had the two earlier work sessions with the council. We had a. A recent meeting with architects and builders. We're bringing it to the planning commission for input, and we also plan to work with our. Our public outreach personnel from the town to have a more wide ranging public opportunity. For comment and suggestions before going back to the count, before going back to the council with another work session. To kind of get some final suggestions for possible code amendments. But with that, this is a, this is a work session, so. You know, we can, we can answer questions, take suggestions. We don't have the 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 same rigid format we have for for a hearing. So with that, I'll I'll stop talking. We did provide the same. Kind of background information in the packet that we provided the council with the maps showing where those, where the neighborhoods are, the sixteen neighborhoods. Primarily as an example, we did use the Weishorn and Goldflake neighborhoods just east of the core town. Where we've seen probably the most, really almost all of the redevelopment, major redevelopment activity of these neighborhoods. You know, easily ninety five plus percent is occurred in the Weishorn or Goldflake compared to other areas like. Lower Warriors Mark or or even the Highlands or Penload or some of these other ones. So that that kind of was the frame or the context for. How these areas have developed over time of homes of varying sizes and of varying styles. So I will open it up to the commission for comments and questions.
Thank you, Chris. Since it is an open discussion, I also want to point out, we have three questions that you guys want answered. Do you want to do that in a formal way or just have each each commissioner comment on the on after questions comment and also. Answer those questions?
I I think it might be good to just have a, just a discussion and some comments and then come back at the end and go across the line for. Just answering those questions.
Great. All right. Thank you, Chris. Alan, you want to start us off?
Sure. That's a good start, Chris. Thank you for that. The pictures are very helpful. One thing, just looking at the pictures again. You know, even going as far back as the seventies and the nineties, there were some big homes being built. So, you know, a lot of the homes being built now. I mean, I don't know, you're anecdotally, I would say the homes being built now per acre don't seem that much bigger. Than what was being built in the nineties. So maybe there is a trend line, which might be interesting to show that might. Either prove a point or disprove a point for the people that are raising these issues. One, a comment on setbacks, and I think this maybe applies to a home being built now is perhaps corner lots. Can there be a way to have more restrictive setbacks, not just in the front, but on any. Property line that is adjacent to a road?
Yeah, and I I guess the answer to that is how we treat a corner lot is if they have a double frontage, those are both subject to the. The front setback and then actually the remaining two are subject to a side.
Okay.
Setback. So it 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 is a little bit baked into how we measure setbacks currently.
And then, a- actually, I was thinking a lot about this issue of positive points and I didn't read. I wrote, I wrote down some suggestions which I saw, maybe I should have been an architect because they were echoed in the comments from some of. I I think particularly particularly Mickey Florio, you know, allowing some. Or encouraging maybe through positive points by the part of the home that's closer to the property, the setbacks. Are being one story and building up to two story further away to the back. And also, there's nothing in here about getting positive points from building an ADU on the property. Or contributing to the town's workforce housing pool or employee housing pool. I think that's a very straightforward, you know, what what is the cost of one unit? And they can get a reasonable amount of points for that. And I think I just would reiterate some other points that smaller density or footprint as a percent of lot. You know, being below the level should get maybe positive points, lower building height, you know, the lower it is, maybe the more positive points. Encouraging two car garage. Instead of three, four or five. And encouraging a short driveway. You know, how many times have we seen everyone wants their driveway hidden in the back up the hill? And or encourage, not just discouraging excessive hardscaping, but encouraging. A minimal amount of hardscaping for a driveway. That's, that's my comments. I'll answer questions later.
Thanks, Alan. Appreciate it.
Elaine?
Oh, okay. Well, I feel like I'm just, there's so much to think about on this. And with the setbacks. I I kind of have a problem because lots aren't all the same dimensions and it seems really unfair to shove someone way back. When their lots are really shallow, so I don't know. Something could be like a percentage of the depth or something like that. I know it's nice to have these bright line rules, but. I'm sure there's lots that are. You're on a corner lot and you're not not very big and you got to go back that far and both like how big your house is like stuck in the corner like, I don't know. I guess just the engineer in me thinks of all these like scenarios that shut me down. But I appreciate that you guys are trying to do something. I think it's unfortunate that the style right now is just this really boxy, big windows. Glazing and that neighborhood, everybody wants their amazing view that they bought the lot for, so. I don't know. I guess I'm kind of a little opposed to. Increasing regulations on those because. They've paid a lot of money for those lots, so I guess I kind of take that viewpoint right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thanks, Elaine.
I would, I would be interested in what. Ideas staff had for the positive points in replacement of. Like the EV and landscaping, if you wouldn't mind sharing those just.
Yeah, we haven't really gotten far. I mean, there there were some interesting ideas. There was. Brett Confer, who's architect that attended the sessions, you know, he was proposing in. Essentially kind of a a percentage of like the material retained on site. That's that's a tough. I think is actually a really interesting idea because he was kind of like, you know. It's one thing we understand, like if you scrape a house, it's it's a hundred percent being lost, but you know, it's, there's a lot where there's a shell that's. There and still eighty five percent of the material is leaving the site and. The person driving by in the car, they think like, well, they're. You know, preserving that structure when, in that sense, eighty five percent of the material is leaving the site. But then they kind of demonized on where it's a full scrape. And he's like, if you could. You know, kind of have a floating percentage where on one end, if you're preserving the majority of. Material on the site, you might get some positive points. If you're going over a certain threshold, then you start accruing. Negative points. And originally, the council did ask us to look at some of the. Waste diversion metrics and because of the our our local landfill not really being prepared. The handle that level of waste diversion, we're kind of trying to work with them a little bit more and maybe move. A little slower on that. And that's, you know, that's working with our sustainability team. That's the recommendation of Jesse Burley in conjunction with. With the scrap, which is the acronym for Summit County's resource. Allocation. What's the P? Park, yeah. And the other part is really, how do we. Verify how much material is being diverted or leaving the site? So that that's the big one. I think that was a really creative solution on his part and. You know, at least got me thinking of like, yeah, that that could be something. There could be something to that because it. It doesn't just go after scrapes. It doesn't, and it also incentivizes, you know, maybe a home where they want to do an addition. But they can retain their their floors or kitchens, which might not be their their first preferred style, but we've seen so many homes where. Really nice floors or a really nice kitchen has been ripped out is because that's something yet the next owner. It wasn't in line with their taste. It was a hundred percent in line with the previous owner's taste. But particularly as we get to more and more expensive homes, that almost accelerates the. The loss of those materials. So from that standpoint, I thought he was really on to something. And maybe we can, we can figure something out in the future, but it it'd also be really hard to enforce. But that was one of the the first ones that.
Extremely difficult to quantify the. Percentage of waste remaining on site. And of course, and who's who's doing that?
What about the boulder example where they're dumping it in the backyard and burying it?
Yeah, well, I think that we look at the, you know, we have a building permit that show that they're, you know, redoing a kitchen or a bathroom, so we would. Ask them, but it's still very hard. You know, let's say if there was kind of a half. Decommissioning, but they really went full. It's really, it'd be really. A burden on our building officials or someone else that would have to do that. So that's, that's the part where I. As much as I think we like the idea and concept, the the real feasibility and. In the real world, I think would be really tough to implement.
As an example, we tried to do. Recycling wood and so on and so forth a number of years ago, and that lasted a very short time because. It there was all kinds of issues and enforceability and 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 all that was really difficult.
I think, I think long term, you know, like. You know, Jesse Burley and our sustainability division is really trying to work with the scrap and maybe some long term. Better opportunity for diversion and. Better opportunity for diversion and in retention of materials, but I think we're realistically not at a point in time where we can embark on that. The journey just yet.
Implementing it is difficult.
We really need to come up with an economic model that makes sense. So nobody is going to salvage materials. Whether they're recycled or whatever you want to call it, but nobody's going to salvage material unless there's an economic benefit from it. So there has to be a benefit for the homeowner that's giving the material up. And there has to be a benefit for whomever is going to accept that material. And I think that if you're really going to make this work, you've got to look at salvage companies and see what kinds of materials. They feel like they can resell to other people who want to restore, resell or whatever, but it's not a simple thing. And when you do a scrape and you build a new house, well, that's, that's one thing. If you're going to do a remodel, um, a lot of decisions aren't made. On the very front end of a project, you can get involved in a project and you could take drywall down. And find out there, there's black mold in all the studs behind the wall. So you got to get rid of all that stuff. Um, or you've got to remediate it. And then it becomes a, a question of does a remediation cost more than just replacing the material? And there's, it it's a complex, a complex equation that is, has no simple solution to it.
On on reusing materials, I, I've done a number of projects where we've, where we've. Tear downs and major remodels and. I have donated a lot of windows and and lighting and stuff. We used to use. Trying to remember the name is a. Architectural Reclamation Outfit, a Christian based outfit in Denver. That employed, um, ex-cons, rehabilitating ex-cons, and we just donated to them. And so incentivizing contractors, owners, builders to do stuff like that, that's a feel-good moment. I also, on a project, we had a whole lot of copper. That. It turned out to be about seven thousand dollars worth of re- in recycling the copper. Um, and I convinced the owners to donate that money to FERC. And so. Potentially adding some sort of system to incentivize or. I think the incentive should just, it's the right thing to do, but but make that some language to get owners and builders to, to, um. To look at that instead of just throwing it in the garbage, because so much does. Anyway, I don't know if that same outfits are still happening in Denver, but I used them a number of times for all kinds of stuff. We get them taken away, so is that.
The roof height, is it, would it just be limiting roof height? I mean, other than the max. Would that be incentivizing building like flat roof?
Well, I think that's what they were concerned is if we lowered the roof height, you might have like, as as it is now where you're on like a hill or something and you. Maybe part of the house, it's easy to get the plate heights right and the height to have. You know, a variety of roof pitches, but if you were limited at a lower height. And you were just trying to make it so you could have. You know, um. Um, you know, taller ceilings on the first and second floor, then you may be forced to kind of. Use all shed roofs or other ones was something that was thrown out, um. At the council. I mean, we haven't really ground truth that, but I think there is. Just understanding some of the lots we have there, you could run into it. I think, you know, Mike, I I provided his comments from it, which, um, he did provide. Um, an example of bulk plane and I I might have Mike explain it, but, um. I almost was included, but it had other design standards in it, but it is interesting because there's, there's different steps at a certain slope percentage. You might have a more generous height, maybe you're thirty-five feet at a flatter. Pitch than it has a lower, you know, maximum, maximum height. And and so I thought that was actually interesting. It's in some ways, it's almost, um, starting from, you know, the council asked us to look at a maximum. Percentage of ridge height, but that's almost starting from the opposite end, but kind of getting. Going in the same direction, if you will. And so I I think we may use that example going forward is. You could kind of do this maybe two ways. And here's the bulk plane example. Here's the maximum percentage of of ridge height. Example, and I think both could be viable options for kind of the direction that that council, um, had presented.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. Um. As far as, uh, limiting the percentage of the ridge line that can go to the maximum height, I, I like that idea as long as it doesn't get. Too out of control, um, because I'm, I'm not a fan of all the flat roofs. That are coming in. Um, and I do think that it provides more architectural interest. To have some variety in the roof line. As far as reclaiming. Um, materials from a remodel or a scrape. Um, I like the suggestion of maybe making those materials available for somebody doing an ADU, for example. But I, I wondered, you know. Sometimes people come in and they just don't like something and the stuff is reasonably new. Sometimes it's pretty old. And I would think that we'd want to, uh, make sure that it was actually, it still had. A good amount of usable life. Um, if we were requiring them to reclaim it. Um, and not just sort of across the board. Um, as far as the landscaping is concerned, I know that a lot of people have been throwing in landscaping and getting positive points to. Offset other, uh, negative points that they're getting. But for example, in the, um, pictures that you've included, there's a picture of one fourteen North Goldflake. Which I happen to know well, because I drive by it every day and. I don't know what happened, but there is no landscaping in the front of that house.
It certainly isn't.
And, uh. No, there's like, you know. You can see a little bit of stuff up to the left, but it's like. Really pretty meaningless. And I don't know how they got away with that. Um, so to not, I think we still have to do something to make sure that people are appropriately. Landscaping their project, um, and not just. I mean, you know, if there wasn't snow on it, it would actually look a little worse because they didn't even, you know, put anything green. Down there. I don't know why people even bought it, but, um, in any event, uh. I, I think there, there may be a little bit of a happy medium. We can't, you know. Completely remove the incentive to provide some adequate landscaping on each project.
Yeah, I mean, I I think you probably would notice a trend on most of the recent construction, with the exception of one thirty-two North Goldflake, that one actually did get positive points and you can see that there is a. Pretty good wall of trees, but on some of the other. Newer construction without having the benefit of trees growing up and and kind of spreading over time. Um. And I think also the crop of that photo, I think there is a spruce or two just out of the frame to the right, but the majority of the front is yard admittedly. Um, but even like looking at one oh six Stillson Plaster, you know, there's three, I mean. Small, one is probably actually a fourteen foot, um. You know, a coniferous tree and then two smaller like six to eight foot, but a lot of times that's kind of. You know, initially what happens, you know, when the the trees are small and you have a big house behind it, it just doesn't look. That substantial, but then you give it ten years and then they're asking to take out one of them because they've grown into one another.
Yeah, that's burning their view. Yeah. Dealing with that with my.
But but I think point noted that, you know, this making sure that we are getting adequate screening and and landscaping. Um, with or without points.
Right. Okay, that's what I had.
Thank you, Susan. Mark?
Um, when town council was in here, we had a very, um. I don't know that it was a work session, but we had a discussion with them. One of the points that I made is that I think that before they run into this, they should really. Try to identify the problems that they're trying to solve. And I'm not sure that they've really done that. We have a situation where we're trying to legislate things that people feel about a property. They look at it, they know there's something they don't like or there's something. But that's different than being being able to really codify what it is that we're trying to achieve. And, um, coming here and being exposed to the point system is a new thing for me because where I did business. It was a system where you come in, there's absolute standards for setbacks, et cetera. And if you needed to, if you had a lot that had a hardship or you felt that it had a hardship. You would come into the planning commission and you would make your argument about the hardship and they would either agree with you or not. And that would be that, there would be no positive points. You couldn't take any negative points for doing what the code tells you you can't do. And you dealt with it and you had to deal with. So that's the other, the other way of doing this. And I think that that going into this, the town. Can make some policies, but I think they need to to prioritize being flexible about it because there's going to be mistakes that are made. And hardships that are caused because of the policies. And when somebody brings that to your attention, I think the town needs to be flexible enough to say, let's go back and take another look at this. See if there's another angle we can look at this problem from and accommodate the needs of the. Property owner and the needs of the town and the neighborhood.
Yeah, and I I think just the river, I think the council's. Issue is I I think there, I think the prominence and overall like. Appearance of size of the homes is the is the concern and and then also from a a certain amount of the number of the. The the amount of the population of the town. And I think right now they are trying to. You know, take this to really the experts in, um. In that being the planning commission and the local architects and designers and then also. Through an appropriate public process and get that feedback and then. Decide then what to do. I think they're being very deliberate to kind of making sure that there's adequate. Um, opportunity for the, for the public to speak, um, related to this topic. I think that's one of the, that's really a priority for them right now.
The one other thing I might just add is ninety-nine point nine percent of all municipalities in this country. Have codes exactly like you were talking about, Mark. We're one of the only ones that does this point system. But I think overall, the consensus has been in the past that it served us well. And it's honestly providing some of the flexibility that you were just describing.
Well, I have to say, Mark, that having worked in both areas now, um, I can see good and bad in both of those, um, so.
Thank you, Mark. Mike?
Um, so I was fortunate enough to participate in that, uh, work session. I think this is somewhat, uh, basic, uh, sound architectural practice. And I I just sent you Christopher Wren's pattern language and the number one sixteen cascade of roofs. There's also cascade of massing. And it bulk plane is a, a way of defining that. I I do think, um. That in the architecture profession, there's, there is, uh, a lot of thought, a lot of examples, a lot of. Guidance or rules on how to make this happen. And I actually think. Virtually all of those comply one way or another, except perhaps the upper left one. It's it's verticality is just too much. Um, I even think that the the contemporary one, albeit ninety-two hundred square feet, uh, it does have a. A cascading amass. You see down the left side there, how the roofs step away and then, um. The shed roof at the very top, uh, does that to a degree too. But you know, if you guys want to get specific about this, I think your solution is cascade of roofs and bulk plane. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. This is an interesting problem. Um, and and Elaine's, uh, comment about, I'm Susan, sorry. Susan's comment about, um, flat roofs and your dislike of those. I think that that really plays into a lot of what's happening. People don't like. What's happening, Wellington blew this up, right? What's happening along, along Wellington. And I hear a lot of people talking about, I personally like flat roofs. You know, my, my, my taste wouldn't be bad if yours wasn't good. And and I make that point that. We can't talk about that, in my view, that we don't like.
Popular style right now. That's what people want.
I think.
Especially younger people.
But.
Yeah.
So.
Quite a bit is trying to get the maximum amount of density. Um, you know, if you have. A more, uh, peak roof style, you know, there's just less room under there.
I I guess I I would probably counter that. I I think it is this the current trend because I think if you looked at. Even ones with the gables, like the amount of space, it's it's probably a rectangle, like I'll use one oh six Stillson as an example. You know, that's, that's essentially a rectangle with a couple of gables, um. On it, but you know, I think that's one of the things that the council acknowledged is. You know, in some of these neighborhoods where there isn't strict HOA control, that's actually kind of the charm is there is a diversity of. Of architectural type. And I think they, while they want to maybe control for the appearance of massing, they don't necessarily want to like. Force a certain style on and then on the.
I wasn't suggesting.
No, no, no.
I I I was more talking about public sentiment and and and, and, you know, people coming in, they don't like. They don't, people don't like the, which one? You know, the big one, the one thirty-two Goldflake. I hear lots of comments about that house. I kind of like it.
Because you have to stop there, stop sign and look at it.
But so I just wanted to throw that out there that I think that that a lot of this comes from, from that. But that said, going back to, um. What Mike has been saying, and I think is a really good example of, of, uh. Fifty-two Stillson, of getting that contemporary look and that and that stepping and and, um. So how do we encourage that? And and that comes back to the. The height and the ridge height and 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 talking about that percentage, I I also, I'm, I'm not an architect, so I I don't. Mike, you're better at addressing that. Um, I will say, and and I believe it was, uh. Tom who commented in comments about. Interrupting a ridge height is is is, and and as you mentioned, is going to add cut up roofs, which are going to add. Heat tape, which is is contradictory to the town's energy, wanting to save energy and and so on and so forth. Whereas you look at thirty, fifty-two Stillson, I guarantee, well, I won't guarantee, I think they don't have as much. Heat tape as one oh six Stillson, Stillson, you know, you see that? Um, those flat roof forms allow. You know, they don't have as much ice dam problems. So we're trying to address a couple of different things here, right? So I just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, I do, there was also some comments about the. Floor heights and and. You know, sometimes limiting floor heights, say, the the lower level, someone might say, I want eleven foot floor or the architect does. So that they can get that open windows and get lots of light into that walkout basement. But now we're, now we're bringing that mass up again, whereas, you know, you might have a flat or a or a low angle roof form. where you limit that lower floor to nine feet, you just save two feet. And you're, and you're down below that thirty-five. You follow my thinking here? And, and then, then maybe we, we work with giving positive points for being below that. So that encourages square footage, you get your square footage. And, and, but you're bringing that down by going contemporary, you're bringing your total height down. So I like some of those ideas. I, I do like the, the setback rule. I think, I think people can work with that. The maximum fifteen and but total of fifty. What were the other thoughts I had? I, I feel like it's a sticky wicket when you're telling property owners what they, that they can't do what they thought they could do or what they were allowed to do when they bought the property. Right? And I just wanted to throw that out there, what people think about that. Go ahead, Mike.
All right. I mean, that's not how the, oh, I forget, it's the police clause of the constitution and, and as borne out by many, many lawsuits that the jurisdictions have the right and the authority to manage health and safety, and that includes planning and zoning. And they can change that with sound basis. And I, forgive me, I don't know the, I don't remember.
The takings clause of the.
It's not taking.
I mean, this is a taste thing.
You can't.
You can't take the use of.
Right. But you can amend the use.
Well, no.
Yeah, you can. You can.
Well, you can't say, if they bought a residential lot, it would be a takings if you said you can't live in your house.
Right, but.
So you can't, you can change the degree.
To the rules, you're, you're kind of talking about the police powers regarding health, safety and welfare.
Yes.
And as you mentioned, it includes our zoning and land use regulation. And so, yeah, that's been upheld many times.
So that, so.
And do that, it may not feel fair always to some property owner bought it, but the rules are applied typically across a large areas, not just specific to one property. And so it's, you know, it's absolutely been upheld in court many times like Mike.
So if the town council decided to, to limit square footage to six thousand feet?
Yeah.
They can do that.
Yeah. I mean, they did do that within, you know, because Chris was going through that earlier.
On, on old subdivisions, on new subdivisions, I can see that, but you can, you can, you can rewrite the rules.
True actively, back in two thousand and seven, we applied it to all these older subdivisions without disturbance envelopes. Put a limit on square footage in each subdivision.
Okay. I, I was not fully aware of that. So thank you for clarifying.
Because if you don't like what your neighbor built, or you don't like this particular neighborhood, you can sell your house and go buy a house in the neighborhood that you do like. And that's the freedom that we have here. And it's not always what people want to do, but ultimately sometimes you need to do that to solve your problem. I don't know how many times I've heard people having a fit about their view being taken by a house. We used to do infill and in neighborhoods where there were primarily one-story houses. You come in, you put a two-story house next to them and all of a sudden, oh my God, you took my view. Well, you never owned the view.
That's right.
You had the opportunity to buy the property, you didn't, so shut your mouth. You know?
I agree with that.
I do. I do appreciate the, I think the letter from Ms. Gervin that you sent today about lot clearing and trying to preserve mature trees maybe in those, I, 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 I do it, I do think that is a good idea, like not, you know, scrape the entire lot if, if at all possible, like just for staging and, and, you know, ease of building. I, I think the preservation of mature trees, especially where they're available is, is would be valuable, and especially in these, these neighborhoods where, you know, you see some of these, it's, it's a huge house and then, you know, they scraped it and now they're starting fresh with, you know, six and, or six foot spruce. So I, I do think, if anything, that could be a, a, a positive point. They were able to maintain some sort of, you know, legacy landscaping or something like that, but, you know, critters and whatever have called home for years.
Yeah, there were probably trees on that one fourteen North Gold Lake house.
The other point is, it could be an absolute policy that you have to leave a certain number of, you could go by the caliper of the tree, whatever. Again, where I built, a lot of times, we would have to get the municipality come in and approve trees that we were going to take down. And if there were some trees, we had to come up with another plan or move on to another property.
To give some context, we actually do do that, and some of it actually stems from also defensible space. Like we used to be very strict. And we're still actually relatively strict, I would say, like where we're really doing it. For context, the the one of, the one fourteen North Gold Lake, the previous home that was there had a half moon driveway. So this one, actually, they reclaimed a lot of site disturbance and, and built a driveway that now is compliant with the engineering code. But previously in this, just using this as an example, this had a half moon, it had two entrances and then had the driveway go in front of the house. So there, there wasn't any, you know, there was, there's actually a lot more or a lot less impervious surface than there was from the previous home that was there. But to, to, I guess to, to Lee's point, yeah, we, we do. But also if you have a logical building site where for setbacks and there's two mature trees and you can't really build the house somewhere else, you can't really say that, it's not reasonable to say that they can't build a house there because of two mature trees or, you know, or even a cluster of mature trees in the center of the lot.
It's right where they want their view to be. It's not very fair.
Well, view, views actually, we've been pretty hard on, because we, we've seen like, there's things that people try to do to be strategic about clearing their views, but usually we're, we're pretty much, you know, if there isn't another reason why those trees need to be taken out, we, we've definitely had people keep trees that would be in their view corridor where they didn't need to, you know, take them.
They could have negative points for keeping a tree like that. Or, I mean, positive points for keeping the trees, I mean, the other way. Things like that, because, I mean, let's face it, people come here to, and buy a property because of the view and things like that. And people spend a lot of money on these.
I, I would say about the tree thing, to reiterate what, what Chris was saying, we pretty much have those, those regulations and, and, and then, you know, if, if it's not within the building footprint or, and it, it, it's not within the defensible space area, then it's going to be left anyway. So I, I understand your, 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 what, what you're getting at, but I think we already have that in place between those two things, because there's many trees that we want to keep and could physically keep, but you can't because of defensive space. So, you know, and, and these lots are small, so there's not that many, you know, around the edges, but anyway, I, I, I really, I'm encouraged by this initiative and I, I, I support it and I, I'm looking for ways to, you know, the, the positive point things that, that I think we need to consider. And I was looking at and, or discuss, I was looking more at Mickey Florio's suggestions and, and wanted to know what staff's thoughts on some of those, you know. We're talking about building heights and he is suggesting positive points potentially for seventy-five percent of roof below thirty-two feet, tie a roof below thirty-two feet, tie a roof below twenty-nine feet and getting points in there. And, and he, and he talks about stepping down and, and adding points for all that. I just wanted to see what, what staff's thoughts on those suggestions were.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely some that we could look and do. I caution since we, as a group collectively haven't, I think with the conference, we haven't had a chance to discuss, so I don't want to speak for, you know, kind of all the planners in the room. I, I do think, I really appreciate actually, I mean, this shows the level of commitment, I think, that the, you know, the architects and builders that went to this, that they really, you know, they wanted to, you know, have us consider, you know, possible options. So I, I applaud, you know, everyone that submitted comments, and, you know, Mickey, obviously, he really, he, he kind of went to work. So I, I guess I, in short, I think there is maybe some, you know, some possibility of, you know, considering some of these.
Yeah, I like his, his, his comment about the floor to floor height. Anything over eleven feet floor to floor should be discouraged. We should not be doing two-story homes on flat lots that are thirty-five feet tall.
Great. And bulk plane speaks to that.
Yes, it does. And I, and I, but also that yeah, that the eleven foot floor to floor gets to be a bit much in some, you know, if it's repeated in multiple levels.
You know, we got rid of mass, but it, we just.
What does that mean, floor to floor? Does that mean from?
That would, that would create a, in most construction, a ten-foot ceiling.
So you include the, the framing?
Yes, floor to floor.
We, we just approved the project on Gold Hill and believe it or not, they built a ranch. And now they did have one gable, you know, for the great room that goes up to above thirty feet, but it's just one gable, it's not the whole house and it's, and I know we, we, I think mass would, some kind of mass, we got rid of mass, but, you know, the idea is that not the whole structure is not, you know, two, three stories high, thirty-five feet high, but you know, there, maybe there are some bonuses for doing a, or ways to encourage people to, let's go back to a ranch. Maybe you can have more footprint, but keep the house low so it's less visible from everywhere in town or from as they're coming up the road.
I like the idea of ranch houses, they're much more livable than.
Yeah, yeah.
But they work on, on big lots, not on small lots.
I know, yeah, yeah. And you don't have a place to stash the grandkids.
It's not the style.
Do you have any more comments, ideas to throw out there?
Are we supposed to answer the questions?
Answer your questions?
Do that.
Um, it, it's kind of up to the, the chair, if you want to public, I'm, I'm a, you know, I don't know if anyone's online, but, oh, no one's online, retarded now. I was going to suggest that, but I, I think one thing I just want to reiterate again, just in case anyone reads the minutes or, you know, reports on this is there's, I think there's been a misperception in the community, this is only about the Weishorn, and this is actually about, I, I can't stress it enough. It's about the sixteen neighborhoods in the NPP, so.
Absolutely.
If the newspaper reads the minutes or something, I want that stress that we were talking about multiple neighborhoods.
Take a moment and read the sixteen neighborhoods.
And, and, and not all lots in the sixteen neighborhoods, doesn't apply, but I, I think that those neighborhoods are called out in the, in the staff report. So if anyone's listening.
Well, you've been several meetings ago, you know, ten years from now, people will be going through Highlands and, you know, wanting to scrape all of them, they're all very visible.
What will the style be then?
Well, the HO, the Highlands HOA has very strict styles. They don't allow contemporary flat roofs, period.
Yeah.
So.
Don't have a number of peaks.
As they make that change, that's, we're going to get more of the same. Style wise. All right, we've got three questions before us. I will look for those and they are. Yeah, page one sixty-nine of one eighty is the first, first question, I believe. Yeah. So, yeah, first question is this planning commission support increasing setbacks to the council recommended minimums? Second question is, does the planning commission council, are we at both? Does the planning commission support limiting the percentage of ridge line that can be within the maximum building height? And the final question, was that it, is does the commission support restrictive positive points for EV charging and landscaping? Want to start us out?
Thank you, Eric. Increasing setbacks, yes. Elaine made some interesting comments about some of the nuance of that, but in general, affirm, yes. Ridge line percentage. I think that you need to limit the overall ridge line that is at the maximum. And this goes back to previous comments about bulk plane and cascade of roof forms. Restrict EV and landscape or eliminate those points, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mark?
I would agree almost verbatim with what Mike just said, particularly the the ridge line variation. But yes to all of those.
Yes to all three.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, strong yes to the first two on the EV and landscaping ones. Subject to my comment about not abandoning some landscaping requirement. I would support that.
Great, thank you.
I also, yes, on the first two. And I, I would think the, the landscaping would be market driven, but I guess not if it's lacking in some of these homes that were pictured. But I do agree with restricting the points for EV and, and landscaping.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, so I will reiterate my concern about the setbacks. I think there need to be provisions for maybe non-standard depth, whatever that would be. Lots, but in general, I support the twenty-five, but they're the setbacks that you have. I want to see for the second one, how you would write that, because you could just go a foot below the height and, or a couple inches, like percentage at that. It sounds very easy to work around. I also think that a lot of what we're seeing in, in feedback is people are shocked by this new style. It's very different than what we've been having in homes, so maybe we should give people some time before we start limiting that. For the EV, definitely agree with eliminating that. And landscaping, maybe we tighten up how many points we give for it. Or I like Susan's idea of requirements, kind of a baseline requirement. That's it.
Thank you, Elaine. Alan?
I agree with the setback guidelines, the new proposed, I agree with limiting the percent of, that could be at the max roof line, roof height. And I agree with eliminating positive points for landscaping EV chargers. But I would consider keeping positive points for landscaping if we raise the bar. You know, mature trees, larger trunk sizes and such.
There's nothing wrong with requiring a certain minimal amount of landscape around any property without going the extra mile of giving points for going above that.
To be to clarify on that, we would still do that. Yeah, I mean, because we would still want to keep the negative points in play for someone that wasn't preserving, you know, landscaping.
Good. Thank you, Mark, for that. Thank you, Alan. So I am supportive of increasing the setbacks to the council recommended minimums. I, I am going to repeat what Mike and Mark said in, in, in Mike's interpretation of the roof percentage of ridge line. I'm, I'm in support of that. I'll just copy what Mike said. He said it better than I can. And I do support restricting positive points for EV charging and. And um, I do support the restricting positive points for EV charging and um and and landscaping, I think what Alan was saying about, you know, maybe we 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 think about large caliber trees um, that that seems reasonable to get some, potentially get extra points for.
Well, we would set, we would set the precedent, right? The first person that comes with it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I I think I think.
Fucking really big.
A large caliper, we would have them preserve that, unless it was directly, you know, that, like, we're.
About planting large caliber.
Yeah, we're bringing in large.
The tree on Elk One.
Yeah, there, I mean, I think it seems like from our experience, and Ethan, you may be the the way in, but seems like once we get above like the fourteen-foot limit, which are even really hard, the source, and, you know, get them sur- to survive and everything, it does seem like there is a limit up here of, like, how big you can plant.
There there is, you're right. Fourteen feet, I was thinking more on aspens, and aspens are are basically weeds, and they grow really fast. Uh, we know that in fifteen years, a two-inch caliber is gonna be a six, eight-inch caliber at least, but planting a, you know, aspens at the one and a half inch caliber going, or I think it's two, anything above two is ten times more expensive. You go from a two to a two and a half inch caliber on an aspen, and it's way more expensive because they're harder and and because they present well right from the beginning, and I think that's a lot of what people see is right from the beginning. It seems, you know, like that one on that you were commenting on, this got a couple of trees in there, in fifteen years, it'll look totally different because you'll have canopy and so on and so forth, right? So that's what I was addressing, if you're going to really go out and get some big caliber trees, and and then the percentage, you're right, fourteen foot, but most people are planting eight and ten, you know, ten is a big one. Um, and we know that the spooch and and trees grow really slowly. Um, um, so, I don't know, I I'm throwing that as a suggestion.
There is a size, like, sweet spot for resiliency and survivability. You don't want them too small, but you don't want them too big either.
Yeah.
And they're much more likely to uh remain and survive and be healthy at a certain place rather than too small or too big.
With, except, and I think of aspens, I planted some big aspens with 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 success.
Because they're they're all tangly and combined, underneath the root systems are so um connected that they spread really easily and they can.
Yeah, if they have neighbors, they want neighbors.
Yeah.
Single aspen trees all by themselves are very sad.
Cold pretty easily.
They like to, they're family-oriented, that's serious about that, that's serious.
Well, well, okay.
Through the roots.
Is living thing on earth, aspen tree?
They can be.
Yep. No, it's a giant mold in Minnesota. Seriously, there's a giant fungus that's bigger. Okay, we're getting a little off.
Well, I I think some really good feedback, and we can definitely work with us, some of the, uh, I think, go out to the community next, and we'll keep you updated with the pro- of the process, but I think that's been really important to the council, is letting you guys know exactly where we are in in this process, so.
Thank you, Chris, I think it's a great process.
In my perspective, Mike, okay, because I'm hard, fire up.
Thanks, Ethan. First off, I just wanted to mention this, that um
Yeah.
You know, Chris is, uh, as I mentioned before, Chris um is now our assistant director here at Community Development, and so I'm kind of stepping into Chris's shoes, Sarah Crump has been promoted to senior planner. She'll be, you know, overseeing the workload and that of the other current planners, along with their own workload, and um, we're looking forward to uh having her in the new role, so.
Guys are gonna be busy this summer.
Yeah. Um, town council, uh, they got an update on the um the Schoonover Building, and we were talking about a little bit about reclaimed materials, about, they were able to do a test, they tried their best to do that, and they were able to achieve a seventy-five percent recycled rate, most of that being um concrete that went to peak materials that they're gonna reuse. So, um, anyway, that was good to see.
That based per pound or volume?
I weigh, it's always always weigh.
It's weight, but.
Way the trucks. Yeah.
Uh, just a quick question, did the town absorb the cost of transporting that, or is that?
I know, but I wouldn't be surprised if we did.
Is that?
Yeah, yeah, so, anyway, um, but I thought that was an interesting point there, you know, now that, now the building's gone, planning for this summer is just, uh, you know, like a bike plaza with some seating, that type of stuff. So, um, it'll be be good to see the little, that space kind of reactivated there.
Good place for a big pool.
Yeah, um, there was talk about, you know, porta-potties, that type of thing, the decision was instead is to direct people to town hall, to the parking structure bathrooms, there's, you know, yeah. Um, there there's several facilities, like the public facilities like that, near the place, no need to do it there. Um, yeah, um, let's see, under planning, th- there wasn't a whole lot of planning stuff that um happened. Um, the driving range netting um that you guys saw was pretty much approved with without any real revisions, right, Chris? So, um, yeah, so that was approved by the council in the town project hearing, and uh that's pretty much my update.
Short and sweet.
Yeah.
On the time there. Five minutes. With that.
We still have a bunch of other items on our agenda, don't we?
We do, that's right, but you guys didn't present that in the uh updated agenda.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't change the agenda yet.
I was thinking of for a historical comment, I was gonna be bringing a picture of like a really old garbage can sitting around saying, I think we have to preserve these garbage cans.
No other issues, questions or comments, I will close this meeting like that.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.